I'd like to call this meeting to order. Mrs. Jazinski, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Fabiani?
Here.
Mr. Grippo?
Here.
Ms. Harrigan?
Here.
Ms. Hellrich?
Here.
Ms. Perigini?
Here.
Ms. Sobel?
Ms. Vadi?
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a call.
Thank you. Would everyone stand for the pledge, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we start our meeting, I'd like to read the following non-emergency fire safety announcement that is required by the state statute. In accordance with the State of Connecticut general statutes, we are making this public fire safety announcement. This building is equipped with a functioning fire alarm system as well as a fire sprinkler system. There are two separate exit areas from the council chambers. The first exit is to the rear of the room through either of the two doors located on each side, proceeding down the stairs and out the main entrance to the parking lot. The second exit is through the corridor to the caucus room on the front right of the room, proceeding through the door immediately on your left, down the exit stairs and out to the South Main Street, proceeding to the parking lot. Once in the parking lot, stay clear of the building and await the arrival of the fire department. And let's hope we never need to use that. I'd like to welcome all of you here with us, and hopefully many more on TV, to the start of a new school year. I think we're all excited and I hope everyone had a great summer and is re-energized. And we'll start our meeting tonight with Mr. Grippo, who has a motion for us.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I would like to make a motion that the Cheshire Board of Education approve the minutes of the Board of Education meeting held June 7, 2018.
Is there a second for that motion? Ms. Harrigan? The motion before us is that the Cheshire -- oh, does anyone have any additions, deletions, corrections for those minutes? Okay, the motion before us is that the Cheshire Board of Education approve the minutes of the Board of Education meeting held June 7, 2018. All those in favor? It is unanimous. Ms. Vadi?
I move that the Cheshire Board of Education approve the minutes of the Board of Education meeting held June 27, 2018.
Thank you. And is there a second? Ms. Fabiani? Any additions or corrections to those minutes? Seeing none, the motion before us is that the Cheshire Board of Education approve the minutes of the Board of Education meeting held June 27, 2018. All those in favor? It is unanimous. And Ms. Harrigan?
I move that the --
Sorry, I'm out of practice.
I move that the Cheshire Board of Education approves the minutes of the Board of Education meeting held June 29, 2018.
Thank you, Ms. Harrigan. Is there a second? Mr. Grippo? Any additions, corrections for those minutes? Seeing none, the motion before us is that the Cheshire Board of Education approves the minutes of the Board of Education meeting held June 29, 2018. All those in favor? Just two? Four. And abstentions? Four in favor and two abstentions. Thank you very much. Mr. Perigini? Do you have any correspondence for us this evening?
Madam Chair, we do have correspondence. Just give me a second here to bring it up. I do have an email sent to us today by Jack Bestore of 45 Tress Road, who had asked to have this read tonight. Stated August 23, 2018. It's addressed to the members of the Cheshire Board of Education. He says, "Welcome back to all. I want to thank the Board of Ed and District Administration for maintaining communication on the presentations at the three Personalized Learning Task Force meetings that were held in April, May and June. For those of us who, like myself, are trying to follow workings of the task force carefully, I found the summary statements useful and informative, particularly when specific resources provided. I ask the information related to the small group subcommittees that met over the summer months also be made available on the CPS Personalized Task Force website." Says, "I must admit, I have some concern that the PLTF was divided into smaller workgroups over the summer. In the interest of continued transparency," he had a couple of questions. "What was the ratio of administrators to teachers to parents to students at these small group meetings? What were the top is covered at the summer subcommittee meetings?" He says, "Additionally, to the best of my knowledge, the outside resource material presented to PLTF has been extremely one-sided. Todd Rose, Ted Dinter Smith, Tony Wagner, all approached the need to reinvent public educations from a similar playbook. Three to four examples of characteristics personalized learning listed as resource material from the third PLTF meeting come from agency organizations, National Summit, Knowledge Works, IANACOL. They have made a promotion of personalized learning a signature mission." He talks about the global achievement gapping, a couple more quotes as far as going to root components, understanding a problem involved, looking at it from a systematic perspective and not accepting things at face value. He also has some questions. You know, what is the history of all this? What are people thinking about this? How's all come together? Says, "Here to this day, there remains a great deal of controversy surrounding personalized learning, but those issues and concerns have not been presented or reviewed or addressed by the PLTF yet." He asks that as the PLTF moves forward, "it is critical that the personalized learning discussion includes differing points of view to ensure that the eventual outcome will have been arrived a fair, balanced, transparent and honest way. Respectfully submitted, Jack Bestore, 45 Tress Road."
Thank you, Mr. Perigini. Any other correspondence?
That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Solan, do you have a report for us this evening?
I do, thank you, Madam Chair. And it is really exciting to be at this time of year. Maybe I'm a little overzealous about it, but this is the sort of, you know, this week, last week is when you start to see students kind of milling about the school, you know, checking things out, like where am I going to be, you know? And there's sort of that nervous excitement with our students and our families and our staff. So it is really an exciting time of year and we look forward to opening schools next Thursday. Now, there was a significant amount of work done this summer on our facilities and we're working feverishly to complete the Doolittle Kitchen and the bathrooms at Norton Elementary School. Ms. Grillo here to, she could talk about that. But the oil tank replacement projects that were going on throughout the district have been completed. So we're ready to go for next Thursday and we're excited for an opening of schools. I talked about the facilities, but the staffing this summer has been somewhat insane in terms of just shifting, folks shifting roles. We had eight retirements, which, you know, isn't an incredible number, but what happened with some of the positions that we either added or reinstated, a lot of internal folks ultimately transferred into those positions, which meant we had to hire people to replace those internal people. So it was this cascading effect throughout the entire summer. We had a few people move, you know, one as far away as Texas, so that commutes a bit much. Things like that all summer long that have, you know, been a constant challenge for our administrative team. And I have to give our administrators all the credit in the world because at the end of the hiring process, I have the opportunity to sit with each candidate that comes forward and it is really impressive. It's exciting to see some Cheshire High School graduates being hired in our district. We've had a lot of really talented people that we've added on. The good news is that, you may remember that when we ultimately received our budget, there was a difference between what was awarded by the council and, you know, what we had initially prepared. And so we had to make reductions on different line items. And staffing was one of the places where we said we were going to try and recoup $200,000. So even with all the turnover, even with the hiring and the standard that we were looking for, we still will meet that budget mark. And I know Vin will give a financial report later, but we're in a really good place to start the school year for our staffing as well. Now, that being said, I do want to make a point that when we do have people leave, you know, we recently had a resignation, we thoroughly review our enrollment because enrollment is a moving target. You know, particularly over the summer, you have students moving out and in and it's, you know, not something that you can absolutely bank on. Somebody could move in tomorrow with three first graders and that could change our numbers. So when we do have a resignation, Sean, myself, the principals will review our current staffing. Again, we go through that pretty meticulously and try and wait and make sure that we make a good decision for our schools and that there's balanced enrollment throughout the district. And I appreciate, you know, the patience that that requires on the part of our administrative team and sometimes our parents when it's this late in the year. But I think we're in a great place, as I said, to open the year. And we're not down from what we projected in terms of class sections. Actually, we did have to add a teacher at Highland in first grade when we were 20 students beyond what we had projected last spring. And that's what I mean about some wild variability that can occur over the course of a summer. Nevertheless, even with that addition, we still will meet the, you know, at this point, clear to meet the $200,000 reduction in that line item. Some other important information from over the summer. I have to credit Tracy Hussey, our PPS Director, who recently completed mental health first aid training with all of our transportation staff, all the bus drivers from Daco, Cheshire Public Schools drivers, helping them identify what might be some concerning behaviors in students, what to look for, you know, if somebody's habitually by themselves or, you know, if you're seeing changes in behaviors, and how to report that well to somebody in the school to make sure that, it could be nothing. But if it is something, we want to make sure that that child is supported. And our bus drivers see the same students every day, every morning. And it's a nice first step for us in terms of making sure that all of the staff in the district have that mental health first aid training. So I know that our IAs will receive that training later this year and Tracy has a plan to roll that out throughout the school year. So kudos to her and the team there. While we're on that topic of special education, Individuals with Disabilities Education Act idea requires that states assess districts on their ability to meet the needs of students with disabilities and they require that the state provide an annual performance report. And there are many indicators, 17 as a matter of fact, that they were evaluated on. The highest level of performance on that is meets requirements. And we did meet the requirements. I just found that out today. So again, kudos to Tracy and our entire special ed team as well as our general education team to make sure that our students are getting what they need. Personalized Learning Task Force update. I know one of our members is here today. That's cool to see. And we did put in a lot of work over the course of the summer. We had two subcommittees, one looking at a definition of the vision of the graduate, another one looking at the definition of personalized learning. Those committees each met twice, really in order to make a draft definition of the vision of the graduate, which includes a review of our performance standards. Now, that review was really initiated by the Personalized Learning Task Force because one of the first things we did with the task force was to take a look at what our Cheshire Performance Standards were. In essence, we're trying to identify what is it that we want from our students at the end of their journey within the Cheshire Public Schools. So we're trying to define a destination. And one of the things that that task force said initially was, you know, we'd like to see more language around creativity in here. And I think a lot of it was in effect, you know, just, it might have been implied, but it wasn't explicit. And so the subcommittee worked to try and create, you know, things like a more explicit inclusion of creativity. They've created that draft and at our performance, at our Personalized Learning Task Force meeting on Monday, we reviewed those drafts and the group that was there provided excellent feedback to us around those two drafts. We'll meet back with the subcommittees again in the coming weeks and work to include some of the recommendations. And one of the other recommendations was to review some of the challenges that were experienced through the Summit Implementation Program and review those as well as they relate either to the definitions that we're trying to create, although the definitions don't really, they're not the implementation, they're the destination. The next phase will be when we, our Performance, Personalized Learning Task Force Committee, excuse me, creates those draft definitions, we will go out and share them with the community and ask for feedback on that destination. And once our community has a clear understanding and a clear agreement upon where it is that we would like to go, then we'll start to look at, well, how do we get there? Because really Summit was a vehicle to get to a destination. And now we're just confirming the destination and we'll look at the vehicle to get there once our community agrees upon that destination. So that's something that we've talked a lot about in our Personalized Learning Task Force. And I can't say enough positive things about all the members of our task force. They commit a lot of time, they are given some homework assignments, they have great ideas and they're very collaborative in their work. The people are not afraid to share their thoughts and opinions and give each other positive, constructive and critical feedback as well. So it's been a great process and look forward to continuing that in the new year. School security has also been a focus of what we've been doing this summer. You know, I'm kind of reticent to share too much detail about everything that we do, but as an example, one of our main projects this summer is labeling of exterior doors to make life easier on first responders, to make sure that they can clearly know where they're going. Door by auditorium doesn't work for somebody who's not intimately familiar. Door seven certainly helps when it's labeled from the exterior. So we're working on that process. Now, amongst many other things, Vin and I were at a town council meeting to explore the capital budget on Tuesday evening and one of our requests in that budget was $1.1 million for security improvements. And I really appreciate the council reviewing that request and, you know, I think they really appreciate how important that the security improvements are. To make it even better though, I mean, we do anticipate a 41% return on that through grants. So it's, we need to leverage that opportunity while we have it and take advantage of that sort of reimbursement while we can in order to make sure we have a safer and more secure environment. I talked about our new students returning on Thursday. Convocation is Monday. I like to describe it as part professional development, part circus. I know that teachers around Connecticut, or maybe globally, can look at that first day of school sometimes and treat it more like a wake of summer than a birth of the new school year and the excitement that comes along with that. And I know that our teachers, they come ready to get into it on Monday and it's an exciting day and we really look forward to that day. It's going to be a lot of fun and we're looking forward to kicking off the school year on Monday and carrying that right through the school year. And Thursday for our students, I pointed out Kelly being here with Kristen. Norton carries that circus over on Thursday and does such a tremendous job, as do all of our schools, of really pumping enthusiasm into that first day of school and making it such a welcoming day. I remember last year's hopscotch board with all the careers that kids could entertain on the way into the building and what are the streamers there shooting off? And it's a bit of a, yeah, it's a little bit of a New Year's Eve festive feeling. And so in that vein, I would love to invite any of our board members. You are each liaisons to schools. If you have the opportunity on day one to get over and see the intro to school, I know Doolittle has a, like a New Year's Eve style countdown where all the kids are outside counting the seconds down before they go in. There's something unique about each school and it's a fun day and we'd love to have you at any of the schools that you represent. You know, please come and join that excitement, so.
Chapman's going to be a glory.
Chapman will be a glow, okay.
You'll have to experience it.
Okay. So, thank you very much, Madam Chair. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Solan. Does anyone on the board have any questions for Mr. Solan? Ms. Vadi?
So you mentioned that there were some staff that left. Are we up to speed? Is everyone, all the positions have been filled again?
No. We had a resignation this morning. So, you know, it is very fluid, not just with our student population, but also with our staff. Things, everything from I found a new job in my hometown to, you know, I've decided to stay home with family. So things can happen relatively late in the game. We are right now, we have, I have two final interviews for candidates tomorrow and then we are looking for a replacement for the resignation today. That's very active. It just started. But, you know, we do a pretty good job of recruiting. To give you an example, with our elementary openings, we had 390 applicants when we posted. And I think what you're seeing here is the last two years, and I think we kind of anticipated this, that the last two years, we didn't have a new teacher orientation. Just didn't. We didn't have the openings, we didn't have any, we reduced some positions. You know, the state budget crisis last year. This year, with the retirements and with the shuffling, you just knew that there was going to, and our situation wasn't totally unique, you know, to other schools. The colleges are cranking out great candidates and they hadn't had an opportunity to find a job over the last two years. So we were bombarded with outstanding applicants, both those fresh out of school and those looking for a change. And so we have really talented people and I'm not, I won't be surprised when we quickly fill this position that became available this morning.
So do you think that we will be able to fill that position before school starts? Is that the goal or?
Well, there's a couple of variables there. If we, I think that's pretty ambitious. If we do hire somebody that is not currently employed by another district, they could start school theoretically on that Thursday. If we hire somebody who is employed in another district, contracts typically indicate that the sending district can hold that person for 30 days. So, you know, we try and be flexible with that and we, you know, assess the needs of the position in class and who can we get to sub? And so it depends if that person is working or not, as to how quickly we can get them in and then what the situation is in the sending district.
One question. Someone had asked me about Cheshire High School in particular, saying that she had heard rumblings, I'm sorry, that there seemed to be a lot more electives or, and she was just asking if there's a change in staff sizing at the high school in particular. I'm not sure. I don't really have the details, but.
Yeah, I think that that's an interesting question because we don't, at the high school, have a fixed course, you know, allotment year over year. It's dictated entirely by course request. So if next year, for whatever reason, not a single student selected biology, we wouldn't offer any biology. And so it's, we try and be flexible to what we see in course requests. So it's, you know, quite possible that you might see a few more or less sections anywhere across our offerings, but there's not a conscious effort to change, you know, what we're doing in terms of staffing or the number of students that we have in a particular section or anything like that.
The staff size at the high schools pretty much remain the same?
Correct. Sure.
Anyone else? Seeing none. Ms. Fabiani, do you have a motion for us?
Oops, I do, thank you. I move that the Cheshire Board of Education approves the consent calendar as presented.
Is there a second? Ms. Harrigan? All those in favor?
I'm sorry, I don't understand it.
The consent calendar is, the item's on there, but they're not up for discussion?
Oh, so I don't understand what we're, so approval of statement on class size policy? I don't understand what we're doing.
It was in the packet, the
Sorry.
The background information.
I was supposed to have read that?
Yes.
Ah, ha, sorry, I did not. Didn't think I'd be here today. All right, so I will abstain and, thank you.
All those in favor? Five abstentions? One, oh, two. You're in favor? Five in favor, one abstention. Right, one, two, three, four, five, right. Okay, Mr. Maciana? Do you have a, in Ms. Sobel's absence, do you have a finance report for us?
I have a brief finance report. And welcome back. It's good to see everyone again. It's hard to believe two months passed since our last meeting.
I know.
So the finance report that I did provide has the month of July. There's really not much to say about the finance report. Not all the encumbrances are done as of yet. It will take us into September to get all the encumbrances done for teacher salaries and transportation, but we're looking very, very good. I don't anticipate any problems at this point in time. Our budget for the fiscal year is $71,643,626. So the report is there if there's any questions, certainly. But as we get into September, we'll be able to provide more detail. You know, as Mr. Solan pointed out, you know, one of the reductions that we had going into the budget was for teacher salaries when the board's recommended budget was reduced and we'll certainly meet that based on initial analysis. So I think budget's in good shape so far.
Thank you. And medical benefits?
Medical benefits, we don't have a report for July. Anthem has been slow providing reports, you know, not only to Cheshire but other school districts and towns as well. So what I did provide is the final report as of June 30, which now includes the stop-loss reimbursements and all the prescription rebates. So, you know, the one point that I will make to the board is that the trust fund balances of June 30 ended at $3,917,417. Extremely healthy, 5.4 months in reserve. And as the board members know, we did take a reduction in that line item, you know, from this year's budget. So as the year progresses, we'll probably start eating into that 3.9 million, but starting out in excellent shape on the medical benefit side.
Thank you very much. Mr. Solan, personnel.
I spoke earlier about the fact that we've been able to hire really talented folks all summer long and this appointment is really the personification of that. Kristen Lopa has completed her Bachelor of Science degree in psychology and her Master's of Science degree in elementary education from Quinnipiac University. She also completed her sixth-year degree in educational leadership and holds a certificate in administration. Ms. Lopa began her teaching career with the Cheshire Public Schools in 2007, where she taught students in grades one, three and four at Doolittle Elementary School. Most recently, Ms. Lopa served as the reading and math specialist at Chapman School. Ms. Lopa has served on numerous district-wide committees. She's involved, an involved member of the Classroom Climate Academy and Cheshire Curriculum Council. She's a well-respected teacher and RAM and her positive personality, enthusiasm, dedication, hard work and knowledge of curriculum, instruction and assessment will be an incredible asset to our administrative team. I present to you Kristen Lopa as our part-time elementary assistant principal. She'll be working at both Norton and Doolittle. And because she's that good, we also need to keep her on as a .4 RAM at Highland. So when it's wear your school spirit clothes to work day, she's really going to have her hands full looking through the closet. So I couldn't say enough great things about Kristen as an educator. So I couldn't say enough great things about Kristin as an educator and a person, and she'll be a tremendous asset to our administrative team.
Thank you, Mr. Solan. Mr. Perigini, do you have a motion for us?
Madam Chair, I do have a motion. That's appointment of elementary assistant principal, that the Cheshire Board of Education appoints Kristin Lopa to the position of .6 elementary assistant principal. Further, that Mrs. Lopa is compensated in accordance with the collective bargaining agreement between the board and the Cheshire administrative personnel.
Thank you, Mr. Perigini. Is there a second? Ms. Fabiani, thank you. I had a little brain freeze there. Is there any discussion on the motion from the board? Would anyone from the public like to comment on this motion? Seeing none, the motion before us is that the Cheshire Board of Education approves Kristin Lopa to the position of .6 elementary assistant principal. Further, that Ms. Lopa is compensated in accordance with the collective bargaining agreement between the board and the Cheshire administrative personnel. All those in favor? It is unanimous. Hope you have some good traction.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
I actually, if I could, in arrears, make a comment about Ms. Lopez, because I was on the hiring committee and sat in on discussions with many, many fine candidates. And Ms. Lopa really came to the cream at the top of a very talented pool, and we are so happy that you accepted this position. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harrigan. Ms. Fabiani?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. This is a report of the planning committee, and of course, I'm going to turn it right over to Mr. Maciana to give us an update on all of the projects and the capital budget.
Thank you again. I will give you an update on the major projects and summer maintenance status. And I will make it quick. At the next board meeting, we'll provide a little bit more detail and some pictures of some of the projects. But the major projects that we had to complete this summer were to the final renovations of the Norton bathrooms, both boys' and girls' bathrooms on both floors of the school. They are tracking for completion. The only things that won't be installed are the windows, because they're running a little bit late, but everything else, you know, is done. We're putting the school back together very, very quickly. There are no major projects that are going to hold us up. I just want to, you know, make that clear from the outset. The Doolittle kitchen and cafeteria is looking great. You know, that project will also be finished before school is complete. The project to remove the underground oil storage tanks at Highland and Dodd this summer, they went very well. You know, the two tanks were removed, there were no issues, and there was no soil contamination. So those actually came in lower than our budget. We upgraded the Wi-Fi across all the district schools. That project went very, very smoothly. We, the Wi-Fi was, you know, up and running in just a couple of days. You know, the big test will be on Thursday when all the students are back in school and we'll have about 5,000 connected devices. We don't anticipate any problems, but we do have Apex, our technology partner, on standby for those first few days of school, just to make sure that there are no issues. As Mr. Solan mentioned, the, we did make some security improvements over the summer as planned. The district security task force met several times over the summer, including today. Each of the schools has updated and actually completely refreshed their school security and safety plans, and they're putting the final finishing touches on those. The schools have all been cleaned, and they'll be cleaned a little bit more between now and Monday. And that's when the teachers return, and they'll be back in their schools after convocation. And so the bottom line is, the schools are cleaned and ready, and the projects are done, and all schools will be open for staff on Monday and students on Thursday. So it was a busy, productive summer, and I'm glad we're nearer to the end than we are at the beginning. So that's really the update on the summer projects and summer maintenance.
Thank you.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
I'm sorry. Well, I was going to say, does anyone have any questions?
I have a quick question. Are the windows from the storm damage, from the tree damage?
No, no. As part of the Norton bathroom upgrades, some of the bathrooms have windows that face out. They were just ordered as part of the project to really make the bathroom look spectacular.
So what about that damage that?
Oh, from the Norton trailers.
Oh, that was from the trailer?
Oh, the trailer. Trailer repairs have been completed, so that will be back online, you know, for when school begins as well.
Someone from Highland had asked me whether there were something about the window replacements at Highland. Was there a plan to do them, or?
No, there were no window replacement large projects. You know, at Highland, we will occasionally replace a window or two, but there was no major window replacement project. And that's the second time that question came up. It came up in the capital budget meeting, too, so I'm not sure what that is. I'll look into it a little further, but there was no project that slipped under my nose that was large.
If I could just quickly elaborate on that, though. I mean, we have had a systemic effort to replace windows, kind of on a worst-for- basis. So we've done several, I guess, installments of those at the high school and the senior courtyard. We're looking at the south side of the building as a next area. There are many windows across the district that could use some support in terms of efficiency and operation. So that's, I'm sure, would be someplace on the list, but they're not at the, on the current projection.
And I know Mr. Solan gave us a little overview of the capital budget meeting with the town council. I didn't know if you had anything to add on that as well?
Well, just quickly, the board's recommendation for the capital appropriations for 1819, the year that we're in, was $3.2 million. The, we've been attending the town council meetings. You know, at this point, the bulk of the request seems intact, although the town council has another meeting on August 29th, and they'll be voting, the scheduled vote is on September 4th, to approve the capital budget. But based on the questions asked, and they did a review on Tuesday night, the only projects that are being pushed out at this point are $175,000 for Norton roof replacement, which actually I recommended, because we did repair that roof last summer. And we, it's not leaking, so we could push it out one year. But we did ask that the $125,000 in roof planning and repair money stay intact. So it's a very low risk, but it's worth taking because the council was looking to make a reduction across the town's requests. And they won't, the council indicated they won't support the $50,000 for the field storage solution on the west side at Cheshire High School. So those are the only two things that, at this point, seem to be out. But as Mr. Solan mentioned, there was, you know, very strong support for the full million, $1,090,000 for school security improvements. So we will give you an update at the next meeting as to what passed.
Thank you. That's the end of my report.
Thank you. Do you have another standing committee that you would like to mention?
I do. Thank you very much. So the Public Information Committee of the board met right before this evening's meeting. And the purpose of the committee is to sort of work together with the superintendent to come up with, you know, a set of goals for effectively communicating with our parents, students, and community. So Superintendent Solan did provide us with a set of proposed goals and the messages that we think are important to communicate. We will be continuing to meet, and hopefully, we will be providing members of the community with, you know, various communications efforts. I don't, you know, we have, this is the beginning of a process, although we do, we do, as a district, already communicate quite a bit with our parents and our community. We want to make sure that we're taking advantage of all possible methods of communication and that we are, you know, really sort of proactively engaging with the community. So that was our first meeting of this year, and we hope to have more information to report in subsequent meetings.
Thank you very much, Ms. Fabiani. Is there anyone from the audience who would like to address the Board of Education tonight? If you could come up to the microphone and give your name and address?
Hi, my name is Mary Rogenstein. I live at 45 Kristen Court. I was just going to ask about that consent calendar. I'm not sure I know what that is and why the statements aren't read, are they found online? Is there any way that the public has access to that?
Yes, please.
Yeah, the consent calendar is a process, you know, that's used in this forum pretty ubiquitously. When we have regular, basically, annual announcements that, yes, the information is put out online, you can see that. It, you know, things like our joining Aces. You know, we're a member of the Area Cooperative Educational Services, the regional service for all districts in our area. You know, things like that, that are pretty much pro forma, that we adopt with one, you know, vote, as opposed to going through each of the individual things.
Was there anything that you guys can say about what happened with the statement about the class size policy? Because obviously, that's something that parents think about.
That hasn't changed.
Is it a change? Okay.
No, there's no change to that. It's the, actually, verbatim policy out of our Board of Education policy. I can share that with you. And it's really almost more done through the budget process than anyplace else when we start to look at.
They take contracts, too, right?
Class sizes. Not too much with respect to contracts.
There's no classroom size in the contract, like a ceiling for the teacher contract?
No.
Oh, okay.
No, it's more, you know, OSHA has more of a ceiling with respect to certain class environments than anything else. But, you know, basically, it's that the board shall endeavor to maintain class sizes consistent with proven educational practices, which require that various learning situations may alter the number of students per class. The board, through its committees, shall study and make recommendations concerning personnel and space requirements based on all factors affecting class size. So, again, you know, it's kind of a pro forma thing that we go through on an annual basis.
I just wasn't sure if it was something we could find online, too. So that's good to know.
Absolutely.
Oh, excellent. All right. Thanks a lot.
Hi, my name is Jack Bester, 45 Dress Road. Can't believe I walked in just as you were opening up audience participation. I sent a letter to the Board of Ed. Was it received?
It was received, and it was already read into the minutes.
Okay, good. That's all, I just wanted to make sure. I didn't know I could make the meeting tonight. I was able to make it, although as late as I can. I just want to reiterate how important it is that all viewpoints on personalized learning get evaluated by the task force team. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jack, it's Tony. I did get your email, and I responded to it before the meeting. I said I would read it if you didn't show up. We did, first thing.
Okay, I didn't get to see it.
No worries. Thank you. Thanks for making it.
Thank you very much.
The chair has no old business. Does anybody from the board have any old business? And the chair has no new business. Does anyone from the board have any new business? Seeing none, okay. Before we adjourn, I'm going to read the upcoming meetings. I can't believe we're talking about September already. But Thursday, September 6th, here in Town Council Chambers, is an opening of school meeting at 7:30 PM. On Tuesday, September 11th, the Policy Committee is meeting at 6:30 PM in the Central Office Boardroom. On Monday, September 17th, the Curriculum Committee is meeting at 6:30, I'm sorry, is meeting at 7:00 PM in the Central Office Boardroom. On Thursday, September 20th, Business Meeting, 7:30 PM, Town Council Chambers. Monday, October 1st, there will be a Policy Committee meeting. Time to be determined, or we'll let you know at the next meeting. And on Thursday, October 4th, is the Board of Education Open Forum here at 7:30 PM. August 27th will be convocation at the CHS Auditorium. August 30th is the first day of school for students. September 3rd, we are closed for Labor Day. September 10th, we are closed for Rosh Hashanah. September 18th is the School Business Partnership at 7:30 AM in the Central Office Boardroom. September 19th, school is closed for Yom Kippur. And October 8th, school is closed for Columbus Day. Ms. Fabiani, do you have a motion for us?
I do. I move that the Board of Education adjourn into executive session, including Superintendent Solan and Chief Operating Officer Vincent Maciana, to discuss the transportation contract with no action to follow.
Is there a second? Mr. Perigini, all those in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.